Right, okay, hi everybody. Welcome to our webinar tonight on choosing a school authority, choosing a supervisor, choosing your program, and a little bit about how to fill out that wonderful learning plan. So this is my, actually I'm done homeschooling this year, which is great because I don't have time to homeschool. But I've been at it 21 years and it feels really weird this fall because I don't have to do anything. Yay! So you're in the right place. This is sponsored by Alberta Homeschooling Association. This is me and the most wonderful Sir Ken Robinson, who is my all-time hero. He's just awesome. So my name is Judy Arnau and I am, I work as a brain and child development specialist for several health organizations. And I also speak at conferences and several teachers' conferences too. It's actually quite wonderful. So this is my gang here. This is the year we actually started home education. So I had a, I had four kids. I had a seven-year-old, a six-year-old, a four-year-old, and a one-year-old baby underfoot who I was still nursing. And it was a huge learning curve that year. And if you're in that learning curve, believe me, it's, it's like having that first baby. You have so many questions and everything's so new and you're worried about making the wrong choices. And believe me, those kids survive and yours will too. You're only making choices for a year and nothing will have an effect on your child as much as, as keeping a happy, relaxed family home. Absolutely, that should be your goal is just run with it. If you've made choices, it's okay. Your children will survive, they will thrive, and they will absolutely keep on learning. If they're breathing, they're going to keep on learning. Believe me. So I have, I have five kids. The picture only had four, had one more. So I have five children. Three of them are university graduates and they didn't even start their first math class until grade eight, grade eight, 13 years old. They didn't start their first English, science, or social studies course until grade 10. We were unschoolers. So what did we do? We played. So I know kids keep on learning and I, yeah. So I have three university graduates. I have one currently in second-year university and I have one just finishing off a self-designed high school. And I have one going into a master's program this fall. So it's kind of cool. If you haven't got the Happy Homeschooling Handbook yet, feel free to order it. It's $22. It tells you everything you need to know about how the system works. I also wrote a book called Unschooling to University. If you're interested in how my five kids got to university when only starting school in grade 10 and in STEM careers. And actually, I'm happy to say all three of my university graduates are working right now. Yay! So, and the book is also on them plus their 30 friends who went off to post-secondary colleges, universities after unschooling. So if you're interested in that, let me know. Private message me on Facebook or contact me through email. And I'm, Amazon is not helping me out right now. So if you want, buy the chapters or buy direct from me. Okay, you've probably found us on Facebook. Alrighty, so I'm gonna just turn off the video here just so that you can see who I am and then I can talk a little bit about, I'll come back at the end of the webinar here. Okay, so basically, everybody in the province, all the children, 750,000 children have all these education choices. There's basically four choices. 95% of those go to a public or Catholic school. And they have to follow the Alberta Programs of Study, which is those 1,400 outcomes per grade. They can do it through classroom, print, or online. And now, this fall, because of COVID, online is expanding their offerings. So I believe they have different deadlines, but through the public system, it can be called the Hub or through the Catholic system, I'm not too sure what they're calling it, but parents have a two-week period to enroll their children in that online portion or they're gonna go to classroom. So every child there is fully funded. The school gets about $11,000 per child for their parents' registration. Then there is charter schools. And again, they have to follow the Alberta Programs of Study because they get full funding too. And they can also deliver through a classroom or a print, which we used to call correspondence, or an online delivery. Then there are the independent schools. They also follow the Education Act, but they're a little different in that they are run by a board of directors instead of trustees. About 4% of Alberta schoolchildren attend independent schools. They have to follow the Alberta Programs of Study because they do get partial funding from the province depending on their level of accreditation. Again, they can offer classroom, print, or online. An example of each of these is Republican-Catholic, Center for Learning, CBE Home Education, Argyle or Edmonton Public, School of Hope or East Central Catholic, FEE or Elk Island Catholic. Those are all examples of public or Catholic schools. And you can tell some of them do offer a very dedicated homeschooling program. Examples of independent schools are Willow, School of Third Academy Independent School, Wisdom, which is through Gilbertine Institute, which is an independent school, Trinity at Home, which is through Trinity Christian, By Design, which is Summit West Independent School, and Phoenix Foundation, which is an independent school. Currently, I don't know of any charter schools that are offering home education branded programs. So home education really is a program that is embedded through each of these two choices. Now, in our list of school authorities have been authorities offering home education program for years and years and years, some up to 30 years. They're very good at it. And they're marketed under those names: Wisdom, Willow, By Design, Palliser Beyond Borders, Peace Home Connect, Home Learning Connections. Those are all the brands of the home education program that are sitting with the public or Catholic system or the independent school systems. Do you have to go to those branded programs? Absolutely not. You may choose, if 95% of the school's population are with public or Catholic school boards, they will support a home education program. As well, if your child is already registered with an independent school, they can support your personal home education program. You may just be one of all their students who've asked for it. We did that with one of my children. They were enrolled with Vanbury Crossroads and we wanted to do a home education program with them. We were the only person on home education with them that year. So it's definitely doable. How is home education different? They follow the home education regulations that are embedded in the Education Act. And you do not have to follow the Alberta Programs of Study, but you may choose to if you want. More and more people want the flexibility of following the 22 solo outcomes, which mean the schedule of learning outcomes for children that do not follow the Alberta Programs of Study. It's a really long title. In home education, there's only one type of delivery and that is home education. If it's a classroom course, if it's a print-based course, or if it's an online course, then it becomes under the authority of one of these two. It becomes distance education under a shared responsibility program. Okay, so I'm just gonna move my little taskbar out of the way here so I can see, yay, there we go. Now, there, this is block-funded and because it's block-funded, it has a deadline. And the deadline is September 30th. Parents have to notify for home education by September 30th for the funding to go to the supervising school and to the parent. The school must share at least half of their amount to the parent for reimbursement of received purchases in their home education plan. Okay, I think that's clear. So step one, what do you do? You notify your school by September 30th. You have to make a decision by then. You can stay with the same jurisdiction. So if your child's with a public or Catholic school or an independent school, you can go to them and say, "Hey, I wanna do home education." You have to specify home education. That is the only legal name in Alberta education that is parent-controlled. Anything else is not your control. It's the school-controlled. Okay? Yeah, okay. This is what a notification form looks like. Be sure it says "Home Education 2019 Notification Form." It's not an application because you're not asking permission and that's a very important distinction. Okay? If your child is registering under classroom, print, or online, then it is school-controlled. The school's in the driver's seat. And you register your child. So you don't use a home education notification form because it's not notification, it's registration. Okay, then you want to choose a supervising school board or school. And you gotta do this before you send the notification form in because you have to pick the school to send it to. Now, let's say you go to your local public or Catholic school and you ask them to supervise your home education program. And they don't know what you're talking about because a lot of them don't. We're hearing that they're sending parents to outreach departments or sending them to the online departments or other departments. ADLC they're going to. That is not home education. You are not in the driver's seat on those programs and a lot of those public or Catholic schools have no idea how home education works. If they're confused, please send them to us because we can help them. Okay, so you have to choose a school board or school by September 30th. Save up your receipts. And keep in mind, you're gonna be purchasing things for your home education all year. So save your receipts until next May 31st. Now, if you decide to put your child back in the system next summer, no problem. It'll go right into the next grade. There will be no testing, no holding back, no problem. And there's no funding for homeschool kindergarten. Okay, so basically, we, you have two choices. Do you go with your present resident board or division? Or do you go with one of these homeschooling border schools that are on the list? Okay, well, there's advantages to both. If you wanna stay, let's say your child's going to a school in Edmonton that's under the Edmonton Public School Board. You wanna stay with them, okay? It might be easier to move from the school classroom to online or online and back to classroom throughout the year. I know they say you have to commit in these next two weeks, but I don't think that will override your children's best interests. If it's best for your child to move back to a classroom from online, it's easier to do that within the resident board that has got your funding for the year. It's also easier to move from a school program to home education and you have every right throughout the year, if your child's in school and you wanna pull them out to home education, you have the absolute right to do that no matter where your child is registered at. You're the parent, you wanna be in the driver's seat, you retrieve the authority from the school to take back and be responsible for your child's education at any time you want. Now, what if you wanna move them back to school from home education? Let's say by Christmas, it's not working out. You got a full-time job. You wanna put them back into school. You can do that too. Public is public for a reason. They take everybody. That's why they have to take children who are moving back to the province, moving into a new district at any time. And they must be supportive. Now, the only problem here is if your child's in a school of choice. So a lot of schools draw lotteries because they have limited capacity. They offer French immersion, which is in high demand. They have a special program like the traditional learning centers. Those schools might say no. And it's probably better to check with your school before you make this decision by September 30th to see if your child could go back mid-year and if your child could go back next summer. Now, what are the advantages to moving to a special homeschooling board that's been doing it for years? They are experienced in home education. They understand all the regulations, all the supports, all curriculums. They have certified teachers that are going to help and support you once you sign up with them. Their facilitators have often home-educated their own children and they're very knowledgeable and supportive. So that may be a reason to change. Also, if your resident board says no, they're not gonna support home education and your child's school is not a school of choice, may as well jump ship to somebody who's more supportive. But it's your decision. Okay, who do you pick? The million-dollar question. I'm not gonna tell you which boards are great or which are not so great, but I will tell you some considerations in who to choose. First of all, you gotta look at their boards and what their programs are available. So for example, if you have teenagers, you might wanna look at more online programs. You wanna look at the boards who offer online. And from there, you wanna look at, do they only offer asynchronous or do they offer synchronous? So asynchronous is kids sit down at a computer, read a text off a screen, look up an assignment in a textbook, go to the learning management system, do a quiz, submit it. Not many Zoom meetings or live teaching. A lot of universities are doing that too. I've noticed with my kids. Now, more and more, since a few years ago, online used to be more and more asynchronous, but now it's getting more synchronous, which is live Zoom, webinars, recorded, more live interaction. So those, that's definitely one question you wanna ask. Obviously synchronous is more interactive. It keeps kids engaged. It's, it's better, much better, unless your child is an older teen and can do the asynchronous. All the programs offer home education, all of them. Some offer shared responsibility, which is the parent takes on some subjects and the school takes on some subjects. Not all of them offer shared responsibility. Some school boards believe shared responsibility is the rabbit hole back into the system that schools try and get those students back from home education. Now, next, look at the funding rules. The government has set out the home education reimbursement standards and they're pretty basic, but we are finding a lot of school authorities have their own little list. They have a no-no list and they have a small yes list. So some are super, super strict on what they will fund. Some are not. And that may be one consideration. Also, do they offer POs? So you don't have to fork out money ahead of time. Maybe they offer POs so you can purchase things on home education without using your money upfront. And again, you wanna ask about activities, which this year is a non, non-point. I would suggest, don't even look at that because I don't think any of the school authorities are gonna offer any activities this year. The big question is, how much responsibility do you wanna take on? If you want to take on minimum responsibility, I would suggest going to home education because then you're not sitting by your child making sure they're engaged like many parents were during COVID last year. And we'll talk about that a bit later. If you're wanting to work part-time or full-time, you may want to go for the most flexible program and outsource it. Another thing to look at is staff professional development in home education. Ask that with the boards. Say, "How are you teaching your facilitators to be supportive and knowledgeable about home education?" Be sure to talk to people who grumble as well as people who rave. And that's one of the reasons we don't want reviews on Facebook because there's a whole gang of people out there that are willing to rave about their boards, but not many people who will grumble in public just because it gets back to the school boards. And as much as we like to think people are professionals, it does come out in ways that are not very good. High school, if you have a teenager, you might wanna ask, "Do they do a online high school or will they support a self-directed, student-directed high school? And what are their requirements?" Take a course like English 10-1 and say, "What are your requirements if the student self-directs this course?" Some boards will want four essays. Other boards will only require two essays. They are different. So take one course like FISAD 10 and say, "What do you require for this?" Some generalizations. The big public school boards tend to be less picky about receipts and what they reimburse because they don't have a lot of experience of government clawbacks. The smaller independent schools, it hits them harder in their funding if governments clawback items because nobody is gonna go to the parent and say, "The government didn't reimburse us for this, so you need to pay us back." They can't do that. So once that money is out the school door, it's gone. They can't reclaim it back. They have to absorb it. So for big boards, it's a lot easier to absorb. And they tend to run more activities just because of economies of scale. They have lots of kids, they have the paperwork, they can do a lot more activities because they have buses, those kinds of things. Although, like I said, that won't be a consideration this year. To go with the smaller independent schools, they understand home education. A lot of families, when you're doing this for five, six years, you just, you know what you're doing. You just wanna be left alone. You just wanna go through the two teacher visits a year, get your funding, and, and just be left alone. And they respect that. That's great. That's what people want. They will give it to you. Although, if you want some hand-holding, you want ideas, suggestions, you're, you're, you want support when problems come up. Let's say your grade-two son just won't write anything for you. You can call up your facilitator and they can give you some suggestions if that's a problem for you. Not a problem for them, but if it's a problem for you, they can help you out. So those are general guidelines. Now, these are more the larger school boards and these are more the smaller independent schools. The schools that are outlined in yellow will support home education high school and self-designed high school. If your child wants to self-design high school courses and they want credits at a diploma, these schools will support that according to Section 6 of the Home Education Regulations. So support those schools. Okay, step three, choose a program. So what do you choose? Online, teacher-directed, home education, parent-led? What do you choose? The biggest thing to choose, consideration, is obviously where you're at. Are you, how much time do you have all year to attend to this? If you have a full-time job, you can't sit with your child for the amount of time they have to spend in front of a screen, maybe consider the most flexible option, which is home education. And first and foremost, your child. What's your child's age? Young children tend to be more hands-on, kinesthetic learners. If you watch a child and play, they are learning in the three-dimensional world. I really like this Cone of Learning by Edgar Dale because he talks about the, what people remember. And this is for adults too. If we read something, we don't remember much, but if we talk about it to someone, then we remember it more. If we're giving a speech, you can bet we remember a lot because we've studied it and practiced it and doing the real thing. So for example, reading about a country in a textbook, reading about Peru in grade three, yeah, not gonna remember much. Watching a movie about Peru, yeah, you're gonna remember a bit more. Same with looking at a museum exhibit. If you're listening or giving a talk on Peru, yeah, you're gonna know a lot. And if you actually go to Peru, that's gonna stick into your memory. Although, most of my kids don't remember our travel before age 12. So you wanna wait till they're 12 and then they'll remember. So age is very, very important as well as age also determines your child's executive function ability. How long can they sit and concentrate? How long can they pay attention? From six years old to 12 years old, not very long. So how long are they gonna sit in front of screens? That's what you have to decide. Temperament, fair, there is two. Temperament is a continuum of easygoing on one side, all the way to slow to warm up and very spirited on the other side. Spirited children have eight characteristics of temperament. They tend to be very persistent, very sensitive, very much structured, very... There's five more, but I can't remember right now. So the key there is if you have a very spirited child and they don't wanna do something, you can get into a full-out blown power struggle and that is not what learning's about. If you have a more easygoing child, they may not remember to do assignments. They may not wanna do them, but they don't really push back that much. So knowing the temperament of your child, and you absolutely do, you know all of these things because you lived with your child, much more than a school board person would know about this. And type of learner. Is your child more an auditory learner, a visual learner, a kinesthetic learner? Young children tend to be kinesthetic. As they get into the teen years, they tend to be more auditory, visual learners. What's their cognitive capacity? So from the 10, young children from zero to five tend to be very egocentric. They are the center of the universe. It's all about them. And they get better from age six to 12. They get better in capacity of knowing that there are other people out there who have needs too. They're very black and white. They have a limited capacity of self-control and they don't have much time censor ability to plan. And this is, although it's really noticeable zero to five, it's still growing in capacity from age six to 12. By 13, you can tell your child to do something, go away, and expect it to be done when you By thirteen, you can tell your child to do something, go away and expect it to be done when you get back. About seventy percent of the time, you can expect that of a six or seven-year-old. So like I said, you know your child, you know their developmental milestones, their stages, their temperament, their personality traits. Are they introvert versus extrovert, are they very structured or very easygoing? Their learning style, their birth order, their strongest intelligence, their gender, love language, and. What genes they have in their brain architecture, you know all those things, you're best to decide which program your child should be on. One thing Alberta Education says is that in the field of online learning. Few programs serve students younger than ten years of age, that's grade five. Generally speaking, elementary students are not developmentally ready to succeed in an online learning environment. In the few programs that do offer online learning opportunities for elementary-age students. Successful programs include daily interaction with a teacher. If online learning is offered to students in these grades, it's highly recommended that daily synchronous instruction. And face-to-face social opportunities be a part of their program. It's also important for caregivers to be home during the day to support, but not instruct students. So that kind of tells you everything, you need to be hands-on and available. And your child should have daily synchronous Zoom meetings with a teacher. And face-to-face social opportunities, now. That presents a problem. If you're looking at a teacher-directed, paper-based, a blended, all these programs go by different names. That is a problem. Paper resources must teach the entire program without a parent's help. Because as you can see, parents are not supposed to instruct students on school programs. They're only there to support, not to teach. But what do you do about young children who can't read, they obviously need a reader? Same with online, they have to have Zoom meetings so a teacher can talk to them. If it's not synchronous, it's not going to work for young children. Because the parent needs to stand, stand there or sit there and read the screen to a child. And you don't have a lot of time to do that. In reality, there is very little teacher help. Parents are doing most of the heavy lifting in these programs, and do you want to take that on? The problem is, it's the worst of both worlds, you have no control. You don't have a teacher's help in most cases, but you still have to meet Alberta Programs of Study outcomes, assignments, deadlines. Those are very hard to do. If need be, it's better to put your child online if they can't read, and that way they can see a teacher. But again, like I said, children that young can't concentrate very long. So you know your child best, you know their attention abilities. And they're not motivated to pursue online studies, usually. It's much better if you have children under age twelve to go home education. With a parent in charge, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to teach, it just means you have the most flexibility away from screens. Okay, online, parents still need to closely supervise until about age fifteen to seventeen. I remember when my kids were in junior high and talking to other parents of junior high kids. Even then, the kids would miss assignments, they wouldn't go on and do the work, we still had to supervise. Plan, get accountability for them to do the assignments, and they were age thirteen by then, so. Consider that, your child also needs help with splitting files, formatting, using drop boxes. Participating in discussion requirements and a lot of those online tasks. You, if they're younger, if they're grade one, two, three, you need to help them with all that. And that requires your technology ability and your time. And remember that most children, young children are not motivated to do this, so it's more driven by parents and the school system. It's, it's interesting, the Alberta Education says, the online. Teacher-directed environment is not very well-suited to young children because of their attention span, but. Right now, it's the only way they can continue to deliver what they call adequate education. But be aware, so if you choose home education, it's the best for all children ages zero to twelve. Because kids learn in the three-D world. I don't know why this is moving, and they can do hands-on activities, it has the most flexibility. You can do the solo twenty-two outcomes. Most parents choose that for grade one to nine because then you can do whatever you want, you can go explore. Peru if you want, or you could choose France to explore, whatever you want to do. And then they switch to the Alberta Programs of Study for grade ten to twelve. So their kids can get diplomas and go on to university. Now, even if you do nothing this year, your children will keep on learning. As many world schoolers can tell you, many parents take a whole year off, don't do any books. And their kids keep on learning and do just fine in the next grade, every child can learn without direct instruction. The best learning is through play and their loved activities. Now again, you don't have to teach, if you want to outsource to à la carte courses or. Where kids are only online for one hour in a specific topic. Online live with a teacher and a class of eight other kids, you can do that. Your child's board is very low commitment, you only sign up for one hour, you don't sign up for a year, super easy. Your kids can achieve a diploma on home education. And there are many or a few school authorities out there that tell you to switch. From home education to online by grade four because they say that it has a better success rate. That is not true, avoid those schools. Home education children can go on and do very well under home education. It's just that it doesn't pay enough funding for schools if you continue in home education. So there's all kinds of philosophies, there's a classical approach. Some parents do Alberta Programs of Study for all subjects, so it's just like school at, at home. Some do just the Alberta Programs of Study for math and English. And then the rest, they follow a more solo twenty-two outcome approach, you can do that, you can still. Follow the twenty-two solo outcomes and follow the Alberta Programs of Study if you want, okay? And just put it on the learning plan. The only reason the notification form asks whether you're going to follow Alberta Programs of Study. Or whether you're going to follow the solo is it helps see facilitator when he or she comes to visit in the fall. Help you with what curriculum you want. And it helps determine what your child has learned in the spring visit. Nobody cares if you switch through the year back and forth. And they don't really care if you make changes at all. No one's going to say, what did Johnny learn in math this year? What do you mean he didn't finish grade three math, nobody is going to say that to you. All children progress and all school authorities support wherever your child is at on home education. Not the same with online or teacher-directed. Some parents use unit studies or project-based studies, some go a Waldorf or Montessori approach. Some do unschooling, which is totally interest-led by the child, and some do roam schooling, they. Switch it up here by year and subject by subject. One thing I'm hearing is that certain boards support unschooling, all boards support unschooling. If they don't, then ask, switch, switch, if your facilitator doesn't support unschooling. Ask your board to switch facilitators, you have that right. Okay, I'll just go through quickly the three programs, so home education is totally parent-controlled. Parent can choose resources, can follow the APS or solo. Can choose methods, including self-directed education like unschooling. Parent can choose assessment or not, most parents don't give marks on home education. How do you know your child learns, you see them every day, you know exactly where they're at. You get eight hundred and fifty dollars at least in funding and you follow the home education regulations. Distance education is called teacher-directed, paper-based, resource, online, aligned, blended, Ursa correspondence. That is, school chooses resources to follow the Alberta Programs of Study. They should not be allowing the parent to choose resources because the parent is only a support position. The parent doesn't teach, nor do third-party vendors teach. That is a violation of the Education Act and the ATA. Schools choose the methods and schools teach. Now, they may choose materials to teach a child, but that can only happen if the child can read. If the child can't read, the child would have to go online to get the Zoom meeting teaching. If the school does not deliver through Zoom or paper-based resources, then. Choose a different school board. The two, school chooses the assessment, including exams and marks, and there's no funding or goodies. Then there's part-parent, part-school, which is called shared, so it's a little bit of both. And it can be an eighty to twenty percent split for all grades now. Parents get a percent of the funding just for their portion. And they can follow the Alberta Programs of Study or the solo outcomes, but the school has to deliver the Alberta Programs of Study. On their portion of the shared. And new this year, schools can take part of the parents' funding to support their school. So how the child is coded in Pasi is where the funding follows. So if you're not too sure what program your child is on. They would be coded six-twenty for an online delivery, six-hundred for parent-directed home education. If they're in a school, they'd be regular. Six-ten is a shared responsibility program, six-eleven is a home ed portion of the shared. Six-twelve is a school portion of shared, and I don't have that here, but six-twenty-one is paper-based or teacher-directed. And an Alberta education diploma can be awarded on all three of those programs. Okay, let's look at the learning plan, so this is a learning plan for solo. Now, if you want to follow the Alberta Programs of Study, you absolutely can do it, just put in here. So for example, this is an outcome for English Language Arts, read for information, understanding and enjoyment. Write and speak clearly, accurately and appropriately for the content, your child has to master this by the time they turn twenty. But if you're going to follow Alberta Programs of Study for, say, grade three, you just write in here. Going to follow APS outcomes for grade three, that's it. And then you'd have to print them off the Alberta Education website for, for English Language Arts, there's something like. Fifty to a hundred outcomes for grade three, and then you just check off the ones that your child has mastered. So Alberta education is outcome-based, it's not that you have to follow a particular curriculum, you can use. Any resources you want to meet those outcomes, so for example, I would put in here library books. Internet, Reddit, if you have an older child, things like that. And then you can pick an assessment method, for home education, many parents just pick observation. Just because it's easier, you see your child, you observe what they're learning. You can tell the teacher at the spring visit that you've observed your child reading a book. That's all you need to do, it doesn't have to be a whole lot of paperwork. So we have templates, all these templates for all the grades at the Alberta homeschooling.ca website. So you can look up an example of resources for every grade and assessment methods for every grade. You do not have to put in here activities, that is too much work. Activities is what you discuss with your supervisor, facilitator at the spring visit. And they write it down and make a report, so you don't have to. So the learning plan, as you can see, is only two pages, it shouldn't be a lot of work. It should be super easy to file. Anytime you want to buy something, you put it here under resources, so for example, if you want to buy Lego. I would put it under here, use mathematics, so you need Lego, put it under here and then you can go purchase it. Email this plan to your school authority anytime through the year, change it up, whatever you want to do, it's fine. Fine, 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 this is the twenty-two outcomes in tech space. Okay, now this is an example of the Alberta Programs of Study, this is science for grade one. This is one of five topics, so it's called creating color. So you can see, there are general learner expectations and then there are specific learner expectations. Students will identify colors in a variety of natural manufactured objects, see, they're all outcome-based. So if your child does that, you just check it off. Compare and contrast colors using terms such as lighter than, darker than, more blue, brighter than, if your child does that, check it off. That's all you have to do, and it's more for your benefit than anybody else, your facilitator. Probably does not want to see this. They will just take your description that your child does these things. So you can see, this is often, I think this is written to intimidate parents. Because it looks so schooly, so educational, that it can be very intimidating. Should be written in plain language. Okay, create a learning plan, so that's what you have to do is this thing. And just an example of how much time it should take. Home education doesn't take much time, ten to thirty minutes a day for elementary. You know, and more time for reading and field trips and all those other teachable moments. Junior high is about an hour a day, and my kids in grade twelve never took more than two to three hours a day. And they got diplomas, so they did a hundred-plus credits. That doesn't include reading and field trips, but it doesn't take that much time, it takes about a tenth of the time of school. As compared to online, now if your children are online or do print-based, that's going to take a lot more time. Where to get hands-on materials, there's lots of great places to get them. I'm not, I don't get kickbacks from these stores, but I find they are very helpful for, for those things. Socialization occurs all over, it's very diverse, common questions. Your facilitator has to be a certified teacher, may or may not be a homeschooling parent. But they're your partner in education, they support you, you're in the driver's seat. On distance education, you support them, the teacher is in the driver's seat, you're not. In the fall visit, your supervisor, your facilitator will come out and go over your learning plan. Ask you if you have any questions, need suggestions, get to know your children a bit, it's kind of a fun visit. And in the spring, they'll go over and look at your photos or your videos and talk to your child and. And just make some comments on a spring report. If your child's on distance education, your children will have exams. They don't have to do the PATs, but they will get marks or things like them. Okay, just remember, I'm going to take questions, so it's, it's just like stepping off a cliff, it's only for a year. It's not for life, just make a decision and go with it, you'll have lots of peer support. Lots of school board support, and keep in mind, you can't stop kids from learning, absolutely. We all homeschool until age six, but there are lots of benefits. This is my daughter emceeing a Christmas. Assembly when she was thirteen, and this is her at her graduation speech at eighteen. So they get confidence and self-esteem and they get a lot more sleep. Yay. It should be a relaxed time for your family, lots of time for interests, close siblings, a family focus rather than peers. They learn great work habits because they start to own their education and own their time. You don't have to entertain them. They have a love of learning, good social skills and a one-on-one education. How can you beat that, right? I really like the close family and siblings. I thought that was the best. Okay, so we have a few questions here. Okay, one of the questions is, how do you, how can you order the handbook? If you would like to e-transfer twenty-seven dollars we can send it out to you. You can find the email address at the contact us of the website, albertahomeschooling.ca. Question. Okay, do we choose our own facilitator or one will be chosen for us? A facilitator will be chosen for you. If you have friends with a particular school board and they recommend a facilitator, you can certainly ask and, and say, could we have so-and-so? But not guaranteed, especially this year. I'm hearing from all the boards, they are just overwhelmed with applications. Not applications, with notifications, so probably not. Okay, do you mind showing the examples of social interactions again? Oh, sure. Okay, social interactions are everywhere. So as you can see, kids find friends at church, Cubs, cadets, Brownies, extracurriculars, sports clubs through homeschool boards. Some of the boards do picnics or welcome back. A lot of the activities are organized over Facebook groups. They tend to be parent organized activities or interest-based groups. Or a lot of kids are still friends with their public school kid friends. You know, they do more sleepovers, get-togethers in the weekend, after school. Usually, home-educated children have friends in public school and home education friends. And they are great. They socialize with all ages, genders, abilities, cultures, religions. It's so much more diverse because actually they're community schooling. They're not homeschooling pretty well. Okay, now, I'll go back to the chat box. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, if your child is definitely spirited, no, you don't have to be the authoritarian parent. That is going to get you in a lot of power struggles. If you have a more spirited children, and I do whole webinars on temperament and parenting spirited children, they are like teenagers when they're two. They definitely have particular likes and dislikes and they definitely know exactly what they want. So it's best to let them lead in their learning. Probably a more hands-off approach, a more unschooling, interest-led approach would work better for a spirited child. But they also like structure. Some spirited kids want structure. So you know your child best. But I, I am an expert in non-punitive parenting. I don't believe in punishing or bribing kids to learn. They, kids learn naturally. We just need to get out of their way because a lot of them learn what they want to learn. And through that, they learn what we want them to learn. So learning happens, that's. And we don't have to force it on them. If, if it's, you're in tears, if they're in tears, if it's being forced, let it go. That is not the purpose of learning. We always say, build the relationship first and the resume takes care of itself. And it really does. If you have to force your kids or punish them to do assignments, you're in the wrong program. Okay, they don't do that in schools. You shouldn't have to do that online. So definitely consider that when you're picking what to do. Okay, more questions. We have. More info on outsourcing. Okay, so only under home education can you outsource? Which means that you can, you, you're under home education. You fill out your learning plan, you get eight hundred and fifty dollars in funding, but you can hire tutors, you can hire freelance teachers, you can hire siblings, childcare professionals. You can get together with other parents in forum pods, microschools. You retrieve back the authority of your child's education and you can give it to others. You can enroll your child in out-school courses or courses that are on the internet, which are, like I said, you only sign up for an hour, not for the year or month. So you can do any of those things on a home education program. Okay, is there a rough format to follow to make a learning plan? Well, we kind of colored it, covered that. That was those twenty-two outcomes. If you just follow that. And if you're not too sure, you can wait until your first facilitator visit and they can help you with that. Absolutely. Don't worry about having that right away. Okay, what happens if you switch to home education after September thirtieth? You will not get funding. You will have to stick with the school authority who has your child's funding on September thirtieth. If you have your child enrolled in CBE Online Hub and it's not working and October you pull them out, you can switch to home education, but you will probably get minimal support for that and no funding. But that doesn't mean you can't carry on home educating and outsourcing the rest of the year to either yourself or other supports out there. Okay, notification of home education form. Is this separate from notifying our local district of intent to not attend school? As well as their application for, yes, it is. The notification of home education form is separate from notifying your local district of a ten to not attend school. I haven't seen the form from CDE or Edmonton Public on what parents have to do to take their kids out of classroom and put them on online. That is not the same of notifying for home education. Okay, those are different programs. If you want to go parent sliding in the driver's seat, you have to notify with the home education form. How do self-directed courses work? And what do you choose for self-directed courses? Self-directed courses is, it's not courses, self-directed is education. So a child unschools, we'll probably do a whole webinar on this, but a child just learns through their interests and through their play. That's self-directed education. And nothing's planned. They don't follow a curriculum. That's what my kids did. They, one day they wake up and they want to play with Lego. The next day they wake up and they work on a puzzle, but they decide, they choose what they want to learn. Okay, can you speak to the information out there that funding will be removed from the public board for three years and schools will be less likely to accept your child back? Should we homeschool now and then potentially want to re-enroll them in public school? Well, for one thing, that's not true. The decision you make this year has to be for your child's best interests. And back to that first slide where I showed the four programs, the public, the independent, the charter and the home education. Your child's funding is going to fall into one of those systems, either public Catholic charter or independent. The school boards are still going to get funded. They just won't be getting the eleven thousand dollars per child funding because they won't be paying teachers to teach. That's the only reason there's a big difference in funding between home education because taxpayers do want, not want to pay parents to teach because they're not certified. So that's the difference. It's not really fair, the campaign out there to leave your kids registered until October first because that will hurt children. Children will not, their parents will not get the funding, the support or a facilitator from a school authority for home education if they keep their kids registered past that. Like I said before, sure, you can home educate middle of October, but you're pretty well an island on your own. Okay, one more I have is the financial and schedule side of things as I'm a single mom. Do you know of single parents with low income being successful in unschooling? Yes, absolutely. There are lots of single parents who unschool. You don't need a whole lot of money to unschool. That's why you don't know about it. It's because it doesn't make anybody any money. But yes, you can unschool with a library card and the internet and do a fabulous job because you're empowering your children to take on their learning and children are very good at learning. Okay, with homeschooling, we can choose to educate year round. Can we submit receipts throughout the full year? Must receipts be between September and June? That's a good question. That depends on your school board. Some will take receipts that you've spent over the summer through lessons or things like that, but others won't. That's a good question to ask them. Is it going to be hard to register if it's done before September twenty-fifth? I've heard rumors of caps at some boards. Again, that's hard for me to tell. We're mid-August and they are being overrun with notifications. So the sooner the better. If you decide two weeks down the road, you want a different school authority, you can change still then. You can change up until September thirtieth. But again, sooner the better. Yes, the facilitator can help you choose your curriculum. One thing you should know is that home educators do not start, very few start on September second. We ease into it, like we still want to do park days, we still want to enjoy the weather. So we don't really get started until October. So I know it's nice to be gung-ho and start, but we, we are very relaxed. So yes, that's the way it is. Okay, if you wish to switch home education authorities after September thirtieth, will your unused funding transfer or do you lose it to the first authority chosen? Yes, your first authority chosen gets it all. And if you switch after September thirtieth to a new homeschool authority, you might have to pay fees. Most of them charge fees and to take you on because they're not getting funded now to supervise your home education program. What is your advice on shared responsibility? Is it a good way to start home education? Again, that's up to the things we talked about, the age of your child, their ability to concentrate. You have to decide if they're going to be online for that shared or they're going to self-teach through textbooks because that's how schools are going to teach. So through their part of the, the program. You can do whatever you want in your part, but that's what you need to decide for your child. Okay, I was encouraged to let him go to school for a week or two and then if we cannot accept the restrictions, changes and pull him and put him in with a board. You can absolutely do that. We're anticipating a mad panic around September fifteenth when parents might think, ah, this isn't working. I want to home educate. So you can do that. Okay, we will do an unschooling webinar. Are laptops a part of the eight hundred and fifty dollars reimbursed amount? Yes, you can. You can claim technology, headphones, laptops, internet charges. And internet charges through summer too, which is really good. So those are common reimbursements, paper, books, Lego. I did video games. I've enrolled my child for CBE Hub Learning. However, I'm leaning towards home education. Will I run into problems if home education doesn't work out? Do I need to pay back the funding? If home education doesn't work out, you do not need to pay back the funding. You can put your child back into public school, but you may not have any choice of them going to anywhere other than your local resident neighborhood school. Boards do, the board that gets your funding on September thirtieth will keep it. They will not hand it over to anywhere else. Okay, I'm going to repeat this question. If our kids were auto-enrolled to the next grade, do we need to un-enroll or does enrolling in home ed automatically remove their public enrollment? Yes, and when you notify for home education, that automatically will pull your child out of their public enrollment for next year. So their accumulated file will go from their public school to, actually it'll stay there if you just move to home education through the public school umbrella. But if you switch to a homeschooling board, it will move there. Absolutely. Okay, if we end up completing our education plan before the typical school year is over, can we decide to start on the next grade? Yes, absolutely. You can move ahead as much as you want in grades. You can hold back in grades if you feel you want your child to have a hundred percent understanding of everything. You can keep your child going over and over the same concepts or you can move them ahead. It's all up to you. You can do whatever you want. Absolutely. On home education. Is there somewhere we can get the learning plan you showed in your slide? The template is on the albertahomeschooling.ca website. It's under first steps. It's also under the resources tab. Are there any extra grants or funding available for the first year to get larger ticket items such as a printer that lasts for more than one year? Sorry, no, there's no extra grants. It's eight hundred and fifty dollars per child. Now, if you have more than one child, you can put that printer on one of the children and then maybe a new desktop computer on the other child if you want. There are a lot of stores that offer discounts to homeschooling families. You just show your proof of home education registration. Okay.